We'll call the meeting in order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westegar.
Yep.
Holtman?
Here.
Muller?
Here.
Here.
Reese?
Hoss?
Here.
Stankham?
Yes.
Okay, public forum. Greg would like to enlighten the council a little bit.
My name's Greg.
It's Cody Bralick.
Nice to see you. I brought you some pictures that you can put them down with different sizes of table here. I imagine you wonder what in the world is he here to talk to us about tonight. But I prepared some notes here so I can go through and I didn't know how many people would be here. But my name is Greg Onstott and I'm better known as Brother of Scott and Heidi and Son of Darlene and the late Herbert Onstott. I moved here as an infant in 1949 when my father started and two partners started Midstates Equipment Company down on 175. I graduated from Lakeview Auburn High School, left to go to college in 1967. Spent my whole working lifetime in Missouri. Upon our retirement, my wife Nancy here is who's with me tonight. We decided that we wanted to spend the summer months in Lakeview and around Blackhawk Lake. So we moved back here primarily to be close to my parents who were getting up in age, as well as close to my siblings and their families. I tell you this, because we have a fondness for Lakeview and Blackhawk Lake and we want to see it grow and prosper as is a rural lake community. We want others to have similar feelings because we feel it's a wonderful town and place to live. The reason that I'm here tonight is ask this question. If a group of interested residents and former residents were to give the city of Lakeview checks to cover the cost of buying the piece of property at the corner of Lake and Fifth Street, would you accept this property as a gift from residents and former residents? This is the property that's going to be auctioned off at 6 o'clock on the 12th of August. I do not need an answer, you know, obviously tonight. I don't, we need one now? Because I don't even know if we're successful enough to come up with enough private gift money where we could be the successful bidder for this particular piece of property. Yet, I'd like to try. And there's a number of us that would like to try. You've probably heard the saying or something similar to the effect, "We may never have this opportunity again in our lifetimes." In my opinion, we could say this about the 135-foot by 70-foot piece of property. We do not like showing our hand in advance tonight with media here and everyone else.
Thank you, media.
But, because we might not have a very good hand come 6 o'clock on the 12th of August. But the old saying, "Nothing ventured, nothing gained." I think that we would always regret not trying. Plus, we feel we need to know your thinking in the event that you disagree and would ask us to stop this particular effort. Maybe the house will be sold as a single-family home. Maybe it'll be knocked down and a developer will build a duplex on the site. Yet, in my opinion, and I'm speaking for myself, what a shame to let this property be owned by anyone other than the city of Lakeview. I don't have anything against developers. I mean, my mother lives on the lake, she has lived on the lake and we thought about what a wonderful place to live in one of the duplexes in town. But you own Speaker Park. The city owns Speaker Park. This parcel of land might not come up for sale for another 100 years. And I say that because the house that's standing there was built in 1915, 101 years ago. I understand the city's not in a position to buy the property. Yet if the city fathers did not have the foresight to create Speaker Park decades ago, just think of the thousands of people who would not have had the opportunity to enjoy this space. The beautiful Veterans Memorial, the gazebo, the terrific Pier 21 Playland Project, the Rose Garden, the new bathroom building, the picnic pavilion, the Centennial Shelter House, the basketball courts and backboards and goals and standards. It's a great, it's a great place. But then you come to this house in the garage on the corner of Fifth and Lake Street. Wouldn't it be nice for the city to own this piece of property? For when a project is presented to the mayor, the city council, Scott Peterson, our city administrator, wouldn't it be fun to say, "Yes, that would be a perfect project for that specific space"? Have you ever thought about someone walking in and having a project or having the money for a project and all they want is the land? And they'll turn it over to the city? If we're successful, there would be no strings attached. We would try, we would knock it down, we would carry it off, we would level it out, we would plant grass seed, we would give it to the city. And then it would be up to you all to make a decision if you want to leave it as a beautiful entree to Speaker Park when you come south on Lake Street or whether there's something that you all might have an interest down the road. That's why I'm here. Just to ask the question, we don't know what'll happen that particular night. Someone might come in with deep pockets and buy it and we won't have enough gift commitment. But if we were successful and if we were to talk with you a couple weeks from tonight, I would hate to go through the trouble for the next 10 days of talking to a lot of people and then have the city council say, "Boy, sure, I wish he would've talked with us about that before that group got involved." So that's why I'm here. As I said, nothing ventured, nothing gained. But I wanted to at least share the thought with you and if you say, "Ah, we just really, we really don't want to do that, we really don't want to do that", we accept it and we move on and we have 10 days to do something else. But if you would say, "Let's go for it, let's try", we'll try. I welcome any questions that you have. I don't know if it's eligible to have questions, but if it's just a forum, that's the overview that I wanted to present to you. And I have talked with some people and they asked me specific questions and I told them I really appreciate their questions. And one of them, one of the questions was, "How do you think the city council would feel about something like this"? And I thought, you know, we better come and visit with you all and let you know what we're up to because inevitably somebody's going to call one of you and say, "What in the world is this guy doing? Is the city interested in this piece of property"? So that's what I have to say and happy to answer any questions that you have with me.
The council can ask questions to anybody they want.
I guess I don't have a question. I guess my feeling on it is, you know, you stated that it was all people interested in donating the land to the city. I guess as long as we're not using taxpayer dollars to buy the piece of property or tear it down or anything and once you get that down if you want to donate it to the city, I guess I'm fine with that, in my opinion.
My only question, but you already answered it was if there were stipulations along with being able to do it as to what we could or couldn't put on the property, you know?
The only thing that I would like to ask, I mean, we probably would do it with your approval, but I'd like to recognize the people that come forward and make the guess in a, not a huge deal. I mean, not a huge deal, just in a meaningful way where families and the approach that I'm going to take is to try to talk to families that they, the parents are maybe still alive, the parents have passed away. Wouldn't it be nice to have the family of, you know, a participant in this particular project? And that's the only, I mean, that would be the only thing that we wouldn't want the property ever sold unless the entire Speaker Park were sold. You know, we wouldn't want it sold, you know, to go through this and then have it be sold to someone outside for a dollar amount. And we'd like to put something on it. But recognizing the people in a meaningful and a tasteful way.
I think it'd look a lot better without that old house.
I checked on the taxes, you know, the taxes on the property and I learned every time you do stuff, I was asked all these questions by these two people I talked with, you know. I went right down the list and got contacted at the courthouse and looked at the property taxes and they're $1,040, $5.20 semi-annually. And then I asked what would be the amount of money that the city of Lakeview would not have from the property tax, you know? And they, I believe it was in around 40%. So we're talking about like 400 bucks, 420 bucks, something like that. And I think, you know, if somehow we could figure out a way to make this work, it's a pretty small price to pay for a piece of property that could enhance the park for, I know generations, it's a long time, but I grew up here and now we're coming back and I watch other people move back here and use that park, whether it be for a class reunion, a shelter house, or a picnic, or watching our great nieces play on the playground down there. Any other questions?
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I didn't hear any negatives, so I think we're okay.
I'm sorry?
It's not agenda items, we can't vote on it, but I didn't hear anybody say no, so. We appreciate your efforts.
I appreciate your time, yeah.
The kids would like it.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. Any additions, corrections?
Just to note that the bill for boost specialties for the chief was on there too. That project is done and that's the bid amount.
Motion to approve?
So.
Roll call for second.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Holtman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple vacancies at Hometown Pride. Connie's volunteered to take the place. Do we have a motion to approve her appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Okay, we'll talk about the sewer outfall line.
This is just that issue about would there be any interaction with the Eric Wallison property on the sewer outfall line? And how does that big hill there affect the sewer outfall line? So basically ask that question of Bob Veenster, what's his preferred route for the line? Okay, and this is the response to that question. That would have it stay on Larry Hauser's property, but actually just very closely skirts what would be the southeast corner of Eric Wallison's property. Okay, closely skirts that, but always stays on Larry's property.
Lon doesn't agree with all that, but I, you know, because if we could go through Wallisons, we don't have to dig as much, but, I mean, they can dig pretty fast, but.
Well, but you're looking at probably 30-foot deep through that hill.
Right.
Oh, yeah. You know, and if we could go through Wallisons, if you look at Wallisons right there where it angles there, there's a cut, an elevation of 1210. And if you look at the hill there, it's a 1216. You know, there's six more feet. If you really get up on the hill there, it's a 44, so I'm just kind of taking an average in there. And I'm, you know, it's hard to say on this thing, but he's got an outfall pipe at the sewer plant of, I believe it was a 1218. He wants to go to 1195 underneath, on the north side. That's a 1215 to a 1218. And he has that at Indian Creek. And I just don't, I don't think he's got it right myself. I think it's, that's not right. If you look at 1195 range, provided adequate cover over the crossing for Indian Creek. Well, if he's saying the creek's at a 1215 or 1218, then he's already 22-foot deep through the creek. I mean.
Did you discuss that with him, your concern?
No.
We've talked to him.
And I don't know how deep he's going underneath the creek, but when we were looking at going in the Gers property, he was saying three foot under the creek, the floor line of the creek. And I don't, the way I read his elevations here doesn't make sense to me, but I discussed this too. But, you know, then if you follow the sewer line going out, it's a 1210 all the way out there. It's pretty much level ground. Once you get on the north side of the creek. And if you're at a, I can't understand why we need to go 20-foot deep if we're at 1195. That's 15 feet, but.
Well, the advantage is we're paying the engineer a tremendous amount of money. I'd hope to think he knew what he was doing. And it's another landowner we don't have to deal with because he's going to want some.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's going to want something that we can't really do well, I don't think.
Well, that he had asked for water service out there.
Yeah.
That's a dead-end service.
And it's a dead-end line and we have a hard time maintaining chlorine levels at the sewer. And, you know, the Gers property, we always have good chlorine there. And Bob blesses him, but that's an inch and a quarter line that feeds underneath the viaduct. And the line coming to the sewer plant starts at Joyce Moore's and goes across that field. So there's a lot of water that sits in that pipeline that.
But if you put water out to Wallison, you're going to have to go to the creek, right?
Yeah, he'd probably lay it in right alongside of the sewer line. But we got to get water out to the sewer plant somehow. So we're either going to go this way or we're going to have to go, if you guys decide you want to go on that extension from Juki Boos as a lift station. We can bring water from the highway because we have water behind TCT Trucking. We could take water there and go to the sewer plant, which would be a lot closer distance. So it'd probably be a little less money going that way. But that's only if, well, I guess you can still go that way regardless of you do the sewer line up going out there.
They can't be in the same.
No, they can't be in the same ditch. I think they have to be six foot apart, minimum six foot. That was the last ruling, but they change that all the time, you know?
But until we can talk to Veenster, we really don't know.
Well, you know, yeah, and he may have the actual shots and what he gave us here, you know. I don't think you need to be 10-foot underneath the creek, but it'd be nice to know what his distance is underneath the floor line of the creek. And personally, I mean, if you're going to go 30-foot deep through that hill, that's a lot of dirt to move. If you can go through Wallisons, it might be cheaper to get them water. I'm wondering whether we can maintain the chlorine level there.
Yeah, you know, just looking at the contours of this map and hopefully you can read it on there. Where, so I'm right where the red outfall line crosses the blue dashed line. Okay, and you can see, that's the point of concern about that hill. And in the letter, he refers to this as a knob. Well, this knob, as you look to the left side, which would be the west, the elevation there is 1216. And then just a matter of a few feet to the east, it's up to 1244. So that's the 30-foot high hill there.
Yeah.
Okay, but he's able, you know, according to this data, he's able to stay down there nearer the 1216 contour. So it wouldn't be as deep as what, you know, it could be if you had to dig right through the hill. He said he's able to stay on Larry's property. It'd be around that 1216 closer. And even all the construction needs was still on Larry's property.
Yeah, because he isn't going to be under there very, 30 feet very long.
No. When he hits the creek. I mean, probably, I'm going to say two or three, 400 yards, 300 yards, 200 yards.
So, flat spots. You know, we're real confident that that grade would still be enough for gravity fed.
I imagine he's going to lay that on a 4% grade.
Can't have too much grade or else it won't.
It goes too fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. One foot per second is what they're looking for.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
The other thing about the map is to know that this is that LiDAR data. Okay, it's not shots.
Yeah.
This is flying over, they've done the entire state fly over it with an airplane and they get elevation shots off that. So it's not survey-grade stuff. This is off of the airplane data.
Well, I think it'd be a better way to go, this way. It's one less person you have to deal with.
Yep.
Or two less people, because you don't have to deal with Wilson at all.
Oh, yeah. And the whole north side is on George's property.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, you've got one less person to deal with anyway, so that'd be good.
Yeah, you know, that was the, I guess, the give and take because he would be willing. He'd want the water in exchange, but he'd be willing.
But if we can't maintain the chlorine level, then we're going to fight that? That'll never be key.
We also have, you know, we have an ordinance that says we don't provide service outside the city limits. No, it's, if you have some sort of a site agreement, I guess we'd probably make something work, but.
We already set a precedence on that. Did we run water up, no, that was sewer outfall. Then we ran water up the old Peters's.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's outside the city limits.
Yeah, he was the last guy that we did that to before the big annexation and before this regulation went into place.
I know we did it.
Yeah, we used to serve a whole bunch of people outside the city limits. And he was the last one, but I'd like to say this regulation wasn't in place.
So this is an FYI.
Yeah, you don't need to make any decisions, but we do, but we will, you know, shortly. Shortly, we got to make a decision and go with it.
How soon was it supposed to start, Denny?
Oh, they're still designing it and it will be, you know, September, next year.
My only question to you guys is, you know, do we want Bob to look at going through there? Is it cheaper, or how much cheaper it would be? Or do you just want to say, "Bob, take care of it"? I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at.
You mean, stay away from Wallisons, Dale?
Is to, my whole feeling, if I'm digging, I'm going to look for the easiest way to go through there.
Exactly.
You know, if you got to ask for one more guy's permission, you ask. You know, if it can save you $20,000 or $30,000 in digging, you ask. You start digging 30-foot deep, you're not doing it with an excavator, you know?
I guess I kind of agree with that. If you're going to save $20,000, $30,000, that's a lot of money.
But we don't really know what the savings are.
No.
No, we don't.
That's what we're paying him.
Why do you want the time to have Bob know? Kind of shoot us an estimate either way? Or you just want to go off of Bob's recommendation? That's my feeling of it.
My act is to say no, what it's going to, you know, what we're talking for, the numbers.
And actual shots, you know, instead of this.
Yeah, the other thing though, like I said, if it goes wrong or something, let's say we want to take the cheap way around and all, once we got problems, will that come back to us as because we made the change or would that be?
Well, I don't think we're making the change. We're going to, we're asking Bob to give us recommendations each way, is the way I put it to Bob.
Okay.
You know, and if we can save digging through a hill at an extra 20-foot deep or whatever it's going to take.
Find out what that's.
It's definitely going to cost you, there's a cost to it, I guess.
And you should know we're paying him.
Maybe there isn't a big cost.
But what's it going to cost to put water out to his?
Well, that was something he asked for. Doesn't say we have to give it to him, you know?
But he'll want something.
And say he.
Well, he's going to want something just like everybody else.
Everybody else wants it.
I mean, you could offer the same plan that we did for everybody else.
Until we have the numbers from Bob, I guess we can't really make a decision.
I'd like to have the numbers.
But, yeah, I think that'll.
We're just letting everybody know what we got for auction.
What's that hill, would that have clay in it that we could use some of that?
Layers, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, probably, it wouldn't be cost-effective to take it out there.
Okay.
But that's what they're going to do is they're going to bulldoze the top of that hill off. And they'll probably dig with an excavator, but they're going to bulldoze the top of the hill off. Now, keep in mind Larry's got a field tile going through there too. That's going to come into play there that they just put in here two, three years ago.
He's going to knock the trees down anyway for him.
Yeah.
Those would be there anyway.
Yeah. But I just think that might be a question to ask Bob if, you know.
Now's the time to ask.
What's the difference if we go this way versus this way? Maybe there isn't any difference and then we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
Okay, want to talk about the 1645? Everybody have any questions on that?
This would just be that sponsored project application again. So now, in order to pay for everything with the lagoon and the outfall lines, would be using SRF money again. So this is the sponsored project thing that where we take 100% of the loan money and then they add on an extra 10% of that loan money. And you use the 10% for these green infrastructure projects, for non-point source stuff. And then, over the life of the loan, the repayment of what is now 110% of that loan amount is the same as what the 100% repayment would have been because they lowered the interest rate. Okay, so in essence, it is, over the course of the debt issuance, it's this extra 10% money basically at no cost to us. And we had, we were awarded this for that, all these small projects we were going to do because we were doing that UV project and of course that didn't come to be. But now, I'd like to apply again for sponsored project. And in this case, you know, if we're at $4.5 million, this could potentially be $450,000 of money that we could use for things like, you know, the bio-retention soils, wetlands, rain gardens, that type of stuff. But we're really looking at some different things too. And it likely ties in maybe to the event center. If we proceed down there, we'd look at some low-impact development stuff out there as far as detention facilities for water out there, about holding water on site. And the other thing would be potentially a permeable paver parking lot. And that's just using that as another financing source for the event center project. And know that the DNR has another terrific project that they are looking for funding for. And this is to redo the inlet fish barrier. And they reconstruct that to actually turn it into a structure whereby they can control the water elevation in the inlet. So they would close the gates, be able to pump the water into the lake and dry it out. And as you're drying out the inlet, it allows for everything to re-vegetate. And then as soon as you get the vegetation going again, that's the high-quality stuff as far as water filtration. You know, so a terrific project there, but they're looking for funding. And I guess it never really got high up on the list initially here because if we're going to look at sponsored projects, we were wanting to look about doing some urban stuff. You know, stuff that's actually community-related.
This money can be used anywhere in the watershed. I'm telling you, we, right away it's going to be used in the city limits. The city's paying for it. We're going to stay here. Not that the watershed's not important, but we're going to use it for instance, the city limits. So that's where it's going to stay.
So you come up with this $4.5 million, what happens if we need more than that? How do we come up with that figure? Is that just?
On $4.5 million?
Yeah.
That, well, that's just.
Interest on the 4.5 million, isn't it?
Well, no, you're just saying if we need more money for the project?
Yes.
It would just be a law amendment and all that, you are able to.
We're not just locked in the, because there's a lot of unknown costs right now. That's why, you know, you sit here and say $4.5 million and all, once we got to come up with 5.5, where's that coming from? So we got to have it operations.
More than likely, and I can't guarantee it, but more than likely it would just be a loan amendment. Because they've had cost overruns on lots of projects before and they're able to accommodate it.
We seem to always have a cost over. That's why I'm bringing that up. Because like I said, I don't want to be sitting here and saying that, well, we said 4.5, it gets out, we got 5.5, and they're going to say, "What are you guys doing"?
Sure.
But these projects have nothing to do with that.
What's this supposed to cost, like how much will it raise the sewer grades in the next?
Our, okay, two-pronged answer. We're having our financial guy reexamine this again based upon the new amount of dollars to be spent. Okay, but when we were looking. But when we were looking at the, at the remodel of the plant and it was, you know, four million dollars there, it was twelve and a half percent for five years. And where, we've done that now for two years, so we'll be coming up, first of the year, we would have another twelve and a half percent rate increase, would be the third rate increase then. But that's twelve and a half for five years, I think.
So you need a motion on this resolution?
Yeah, this just authorizes the application. And just know that when the application goes in, it's pretty broad, you're not committed to doing certain projects. They just wanna know that you have projects in mind and really that you have a plan, uh, a plan in place about, about potential projects and how they could be used. And are, we're so much better off than most everybody else because we have this nice watershed project, you know, and, and this thorough plan that's already been prepared. So, uh, we've always been, I think, looked at very favorably.
I'd make the motion.
Sixteen forty-five? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Muller?
Yes.
Fulton?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Hush?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay. Annex, update.
Yeah, I guess, just a little update and then look for a little bit of, uh, guidance from the council about how it is that you would really like to proceed. Did your map come out looking very good on page eight? Kinda follow who's who, yep? Uh, so I, I just put the property owner's name on, uh, on all those parcels. So Bob Tarrell has, uh, requested annexation of that property. Okay? The existing city limits show they're in purple. And you need to be contiguous with the existing city limits by a strip of land that's at least fifty feet wide. So, just starting from Tarrell's and working to the south, you see that there's actually only one property owner between Tarrell's and the existing city limits, and that's Landfierce. And, um, I've just had real brief phone, phone conversation with them, saying that we've received this application and I'd like to talk to you about it. And then I'm supposed to meet with them tomorrow and that's gonna get pushed back now till Wednesday. But, uh, that's, uh, that is going to happen shortly, to talk with them about really what we, uh, to gauge their interest, see if they can, can voluntarily come along, or there's other options if they're, if they're not interested in voluntarily annexing. And I guess let's just go through that right now, that, um, there's a process with the state that's basically, it's an eighty-twenty bond, uh, non-consenting voluntary applications, annexation. So you can, you can, uh, have eighty percent of the affected acres would voluntarily annex, then you can have up to twenty percent affected acres who would not voluntarily choose to annex. And they can come along with it anyway, and, and the state, city develop, the city development board can, can mandate that that would happen. Now, as you think about this big annexation of all the lands around the lake, that's actually how that worked, it was an eighty-twenty voluntary annexation. Cause we had a couple of real large, large property owners who had petition for annexation. We had all of these small individual house, uh, house owners who were non-consenting, but they were totaled less than twenty percent of the property. So, uh, it was this process that went through the city development board, and the city development board then ultimately, uh, ruled in the city's favor. And, and then that's how that annexation went into place. So, if Landfierce would say, yep, we'll voluntarily annex, and it's a hundred percent voluntary, then it's just a resolution of the city council and we send off some notifications afterwards and it's done. If they're, if they would not be, um, voluntary, then it falls underneath this non-consenting. So, just in rough terms, Tarrell, Tarrell's parcel is ten acres. So that would mean that, that could be like up to two acres of, uh, of Landfierce property, then that could, could come along non-consenting. Which may, which is about the width of the street. You know, so it can, it can still maintain contiguousness and basically it's done with this, with this street right away. Now, and I talked with the, uh, with the state about that and they're okay with that idea. They said it's, um, probably meets the letter of the law, although they're not too excited about it. They call these things flagpole annexations. We have a short strip of land that connects the, uh, the big flag full of land up here with a really short strip, and they're not too keen on the flagpole annexations. But, if it's voluntary, certainly if it's voluntary, it's no problem. Um, I guess my question to the council is, um, any of your thoughts on voluntary versus not involuntary? And the third one to add in would be, yep, how much land would you really be interested in, in annexing into the, into the community? Would you have any desire to look to the north?
Mary Badkirk's me.
Yeah. And, and again, so it's Jensen's and Landfierce around there to the, to the north.
Well, I guess if they're willing, we don't, we have nothing against that doing.
No, I say if, if they would be willing, I, I would certainly probably think it'd be favorable. I guess I wouldn't see that.
I don't think she's in favor. Mary Becker's not in favor.
We, they were all approached originally, again, with this big lake annexation fifteen years ago and nothing ever came of it. Uh, Landfierce may, may be interested. Um, but, uh, they've brought this point up several times about wanting sanitary sewer access for the trailer park. And, you know, if they would annex the trailer park and pay a connection fee, they'd be eligible to.
Does that Jensen, uh, or that Landfierce, she's a, a daughter of the Jensen?
Yeah.
That's how it is, yeah.
So they're, they're, they'll like cost to us as the connection fee, or to them, Landfierce is the connection fee, if that was the case?
To have sewer, yeah. Yeah. I guess you just say we, they're treated like any other, any other customer. Then if they would annex into town, they'd be treated like any other customer.
How much is the connection fee?
Twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And if there was three houses out there, it'd be twelve hundred and fifty dollars per house. Okay, in this case, we, for the trailer park, it's twelve hundred and fifty dollars plus twenty-five percent of that for each additional unit. That's the way the code reads for, for things like a trailer park.
So, in Tarrell's case, there's no property or houses there right now, so if he wants to put something there, what, what's the cost of him to do that?
It's still this, you know, it's a connection fee per unit when he, when he does it.
When he does it.
Didn't they resist last time, cause the cost was too high per person?
Yeah. The connection fee, when it was Black Hawk sanitary back in the day, was five thousand dollars.
Would it be fair to say they would try to negotiate that in the deal?
I would fully expect that. Yes.
That's an idea. And if that is the case, then we have to wait and come back, or how do we do that?
You know, if there's, if there's gonna be any give and take on, on an annexation thing, we would have a pre-annexation agreement in place with them. And, uh.
But the council should expect something like that, is that what you're saying? I'm not saying.
Yeah, I guess, potentially, yeah. Not on my end of things, you know, we, we would just.
Maybe if they just said, yeah, we'd sure like to volunteer.
So if this, if this property is annexed and more of it here besides where that little camper area trailer is, is there, who's, who would pay if they wanted like streets up in there or something eventually?
It's all private.
They have to pay for all of that.
The developer.
Yeah, even, uh, we, we have a subdivision code in place that's, that lays out who's responsible for what. And we have requirements about what types of streets, what size of utilities and all this stuff. Just the, the rule of thumb is the city does electric and water. Developer does, uh, streets, sewer, storm sewer.
Is that what you did when you did that section down there, Lon?
Yep, we paid for the street and.
Right.
Sewer.
City put in water.
Yeah. So we're staying consistent.
Yep.
But if these other people don't want to get annexed, then that turns into a fight and I don't know if anybody's up for that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just seeing if there was any interest in that, if you, if we ended up with a purely involuntary annexation of people, would you have any desire to look at that?
Why, why wouldn't we want to do that if we could? Do they have to hook up to the sewer? Do they have their own septic? Do they have to hook up to?
Um, no.
No.
No, I think even if they annexed, I think the way our code reads, they probably still don't have to. You got, there, do a little backtracking on that though, Terry, cause you gotta have access to a gravity feed sewer, and there's gravity feed sewer across from that trailer park?
From Landfierce?
Yeah. Then they, if they have access to a gravity feed sewer, they're supposed to be connected.
So that's different then on the south side of town, where they don't, where they have septic?
Yeah, cause there's no access to a sewer.
Okay.
But there may be. If Tarrell, if Tarrell does it, there'll be access to a gravity feed sewer on that side. Have Bobby do that.
Well, um, I'm gonna meet with Landfierce, like I said, it's probably Wednesday now before I get a chance to meet with him. Um, and we'll see where we go, but, but Bob, Bob Tarrell has given me a handwritten note requesting the annexation. And really, the only thing that it says on that is that we would request annexation and we want to come into the city as zoned as R3. Okay? And that's consistent with our zoning too, all newly annexed areas according to our zoning code come in as R3. So that's consistent.
So that has nothing to do with the lake, LP or, no? None of that?
LR.
LR?
LR, no, no.
Yeah, no.
No, I don't have nothing to do with it.
It's not on the list.
Okay.
No, but, uh, you, so when it, as we get closer, we'll, we'll actually have a different uh, application for Bobby Tarrell to fill out, and it'll have his legal description and everything, it'll be a formal application. But, um, he has shown his interest and we wanna keep proceeding down the line. You know, and I guess unless we have any other thoughts, what I would do is work with Tarrell and work with Landfierce to connect to the south and see.
What, another way you could approach that after you get it done, then tell them what's going on, work yourself going, so, would you like to be part of this? Here's what your neighbors are doing. You know, and, you know, because not knowing, jumping in, it's gonna be a little cautious about it, but, uh, you know, just, still approach us at some point in time.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, there's actually only two, two other people. It's that Marty Jensen and, uh, Mary Becker.
And she's letting us dump the grass out of the lake now.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It saves us twenty minute trying with fuel out there. We only go out to Schultz whenever it's raining, we can't, you know, we've been getting stuck down at the dills. Okay, you're on vacation?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna be on vacation starting on Wednesday, but actually, maybe tomorrow if I get some stuff done, I'll be on vacation a little bit. But I will actually be out of town then, uh, starting Thursday, Thursday through Sunday. Just a couple other things. I wish I had an update on Sunset Drive, nothing new. You, you hear anything?
Oh, sorry for the red. We're waiting for the contractor to, uh, he doesn't want to tear out the road until the contractor says he can be here that next week. The spin contractor, which makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Don't upset the neighbors.
What is the deadline on September?
Just the thirty.
I think September thirty.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, they got plenty of time, they'll lock that up in the week.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and you talked quite a bit about tree damage and just that there was a lot and, and a tree limb went through the roof at the library.
Oh.
I, I would like to add something to that though. You guys need to start planting a hell of a lot more trees than we're planting right now. Cause I've cut three trees down this year.
So these are ones, like mine today, is that gonna give you a climate issue?
These are in the fall, we put them.
We, we plant trees in fall. Um, and we propose to have a, a trees forever grant to plant twelve of them.
I'll take one.
That's what I'm saying, but you're not, you're losing more trees than what you're working on. And if the ash ore comes in, then you're gonna lose a hell of a lot of trees quick.
So what's your recommendation, how many trees should, should we?
Fifty. At least fifty a year.
Fifty a year?
You might think I'm nuts, but just don't buy a bigger tree. Then you, you, you can still spend the same amount of money. Everybody likes a bigger tree right away, but, but then again, you gotta water that tree too. That might be something where, like, if you're talking to the homeowner, when you put the tree in, ask him, he would maintain that tree.
I always water mine.
Well, but, I mean, you're one of the few.
Yeah. Most don't.
If we would talk to them and say, you know, would you put five gallons of water on it every three days or something like that, you know? That's all it takes.
I think.
But, uh, you know, Scott and I've had this conversation, he likes a bigger tree, that's fine, cause it looks nice right away, but it costs a hell of a lot more too. So, we might have to look at buying some smaller trees, stay in the same budget and, and, uh, you, you, you guys better start putting some trees in, cause we're losing them fast.
Well, we got, you know, that one we put, that's two years ago, that's probably, you know, six inches around now.
Adopted tree in the newsletter?
Guess you're good.
Yeah.
Let's take a look. I've got one or two of them. Counting yours.
What else you got?
Uh, just on, on that library roof, I was thinking about that more today, that, kinda wanted to file an, an insurance claim on that library roof, and I'm not sure that we're going to. We have a five thousand dollar deductible on our buildings. Okay, so I'm thinking we're just gonna repair that thing and.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a two-foot hole, just a small hole.
Yeah, they said it's a six-inch hole maybe?
Six-inch hole, but as hard as it hits, hold through there, is there busted raptors in there, you know, you might find more than you think. But you need to hire them.
Yeah.
We got ten thousand things going on right now.
So if we got it, so if it does rain, it won't get water in it?
We shangled it today, we just slip shingles underneath so it can sit there for a while, you know?
Let's get somebody to look at that and do it right.
Two nails in it, we're all.
We'll get somebody to look at it professionally.